Let me bring our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, on behalf of the Planning Commission, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for December 10, 2024. For those of you that have not been with us before, our standard procedure is to look to our staff, our planner and our engineer for an overview of the applications that are going to be in front of us. And they'll describe them, and during that process, the commissioners may ask questions. Then we'll look to the applicant for their presentation and any comments they want to offer. Invite comments from anyone in the audience that is here that has comment on the application. Then we deliberate on the item, make a decision, and that's the process. So, our first item is an administrative item, which is the review of the minutes from our last meeting on November 12, 2024.
I move that we approve the minutes as corrected. Second?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay. Our first item is the Planning Commission will consider the request of the property owner at 132 Linda Court for approval of an amendment to a previously approved fence and sports court locations in addition to an amended grading variance of people. So this item has been in front of us now three times. First originally when it was approved back in 2022, and more recently, a couple times this year. As it was in front of us this year, it was because it wasn't installed exactly how it was approved. And as we reviewed their proposal to correct what was done, we offered some suggestions on what they might do to bring it to a place that we could give it approval. And there are some grading issues and some landscape issues. And I know Eric's going to give us an overview.
Yes, sir.
Go for it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. And as the chair was saying, our first item for consideration is 132 Linda Court. As was stated, this was before the Planning Commission in September, on September 10, and prior to that on July 9. And in both instances, it was explained that the improvements that were proposed and approved initially in 2022 were not installed in the places that they were approved, primarily the fence, the fence that is along Linda Lane here and as it wraps around towards Linda Court. There's a sport court here that was enlarged to a footprint that was larger than it was approved. And then some dimensions affiliated with the pool as well. So this is located in the A3 zoning district at the corner of Linda Court and Linda Lane. Linda Court is the street where the property gains its primary access from. However, passing by along Linda Lane is where the site is most visible from. So doing a yard determination map, because it's a corner lot, it has two front yards, two side yards, and then a rear yard at the northern tip. And so comparing what was originally approved back in 2022, you can see the layout, eyeball the layout of the pool, sport court, and a pavilion with a fence that was closer in than what was built. So this plan represents both what was before the Planning Commission last time in September and what's before you today. Essentially, the Planning Commission was considering what's before them, that being the front and side yard fence and the side yard sport court, also the cuts and fills. And so, given that this layout has not changed since September, it's before you again today, the meeting minutes reflect that there was primary concern over the screening of the portion of the fence that is in closer proximity to Linda Lane here, an adequate screening for that segment of fence. The minutes also reflect that the Planning Commission requests the applicant to create less of a footprint of the fence in the front yard. And so the revised plans that we received do show that. I'm just going to skip ahead a little bit here to show what the approved landscape screening was at the time. So this is what the approval of the fence and the side yard accessory structures would have required in terms of screening. It's a mix of green giant arborvitae, white pine, and spruce. And as you can see, all of those would have been in the realm of 10 to 12 feet in height when planted. So at the September meeting, the Planning Commission was showing favoritism towards this landscape screening plan being implemented and asking that the applicant take that into strong consideration. So this was what was presented prior to that September meeting. This was the July meeting. And as you can see, there were a line of existing spruce trees that were planted. Those are currently in existence, as anyone who has passed the site would see those. And then there was a mix of green giant arborvitae and white pine in the mix. And that was tabled in July for the applicant to consider additional screening enhancements. And so this is what was presented in September. Just to refresh your memories, again, it's the existing line of spruce, wintergreen arborvitae, and then concolor fir. We also discussed relocation of the fence. This is what was proposed at the time. The preference, according to the applicant, was to keep the fence in the location that it is currently installed. The challenge with this configuration was that there's stairs that step down, and so there's a bit of interference in that location. So the Planning Commission still had asked that this portion of the fence be lessened to a certain extent, and you'll see that in just a second here. So this red dash line shows what's currently built. And then what's proposed is a jog in the fence shown in orange here. And then this diagram also represents what's currently proposed in terms of the screening as it pertains to the planting standards of Section 233. So our review indicates that the applicant did achieve that. So as you can see, there's 16 concolor fir, white pine, or green giant arborvitae, all within 10 to 12 feet proposed. And then immediate screening of the fence will consist of approximately 43 techni, techni, I guess is how you say it, arborvitae, five feet in height, so that would exceed the height of the fence by a foot. And then again, those 39 existing 12-foot spruce trees along the Linda Lane and the side property line. And then the northern half of the site remains primarily the same, except there is some enhancements here. Six of those concolored fir, white pine, green giant mix will be implemented in these locations here to help further screen that portion of the fence, which happens to be at the dead-end street of Linda Court. So these next few images will just help kind of gauge and understand perspectives of what's changing. So this portion of the fence is what currently ties into the home here. And so that will remain essentially in the same spot, but it will jog along here before returning back out to where it currently is. Get a few perspectives on that in these following slides. So the change in the fence direction will occur here and then go back towards the street where it's currently located there. And then these dash lines here in color were added to represent what you're seeing on the diagram. So instead of the fence existing here, it'll jog here, creating more area facing the street. And just to elaborate that, due to the change in the direction of the fence, the applicant proposes no change to the screening approach that they're taking with the immediate arborvitae's and then the additional screening of the larger trees out front. So this is where that previous jog in the fence was proposed. But as you can see, there's elevation interference here, so they propose to take the fence in the direction of the orange dash line. And then just for visual sake, this is what the site looks like from Linda Lane, which is where the primary concern is. So again, the fence is going to jog or change at this location. And then all of this will have immediate screening in addition to some larger trees that are planted there. Same here along the rest of the line of the spruce trees. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I believe the applicant's also here.
Any questions for Eric?
I thought Commissioner Hostler was suggesting that, yes, move the fence, even though it's all in the front yard, but also to change its angle. I thought we weren't going to do this, this, and then keep it. I thought it was going to be closer, so you don't, it isn't all the way across the front of the... That's what I was understanding at the end of the last approval.
Sure. The applicant's here and can address that. Our take on it was that as long as the fence was shifted further in so that there was more open space to be screened, then that would be at least an approach that the applicant could take. But if it's the Planning Commission's desire to see the angled fence, then that's certainly something that they can consider. But again, the screening of that portion of the fence doesn't change. It's all going to stay in the same place as proposed. So whether the fence remains in its current jogged location or on an angle, that's not going to change the screening of that fence segment. So the screening would remain the same. So you shouldn't be able to see.
You mean the soldier arborvitae along the fence? It just is going to come across the front and go like this and continue across and go straight back, whereas I thought it was coming, you know, minimizing this way and then going straight back this way. So you didn't have the entire front yard when you're driving by Linda Lane, looking at a fence, having a fence in the entire front yard.
If you could look at this illustration here, are you referring to an angle at this location here?
Where the stairs are.
Here?
That.
To go here?
No. Going back, I thought that's what Commissioner Hostler was talking about. Or maybe it was you, Brad, that Mr. Baxter.
I think we had talked about cutting the corner and making an angle to the back corner.
Yeah, I don't see that. We still have complete front yard fence. When the angles you show in the photographs, it was much better than the actual resident driving by. Having the entire front of the yard with the fence. And maybe now it jogs this way and this way, but it's all parallel to the Linda Lane. And before, I thought the last meeting we had, we discussed, and it was one of the commissioner's recommendations, that it angle back, and everyone was comfortable with that.
Yes.
Can you throw some other photos up there that show what we're looking at?
Yep. To confirm, that is mentioned in the minutes. So it does state that the angle of the fence be...
Tucked in.
Tucked in or softened, what is the term? To gently bring the fence toward the end of the patio in towards the home. And so with less of an angle, this one's more of a right angle to create kind of what was stated in the...
In my opinion, it's still, from the road, you see a complete fence in the front yard. I drove there today, and if you keep, it's just not what was discussed at the last meeting as being agreeable. And they continue to not do what we ask, and that's why it's unfortunate this project has come back. But they did, they built the fence in the place that we asked them not to, more in the front yard, more facing Linda Lane, all along Linda Lane, where all of those residents on that street have to see the fence. We don't even allow fences in the side yard, so I don't know why we're all comfortable with the fence. And once again, he is not modifying as I thought we might, he might.
If not for this relocation, where would the angle occur?
Where the P is, it was supposed to angle all the way back.
Oh, here?
As I recall from your, that was what you were all comfortable with.
Well, I don't think you can do that because the steps up to that terrace are then open to the pool. So you have to terminate the fence where it's terminated now at the house so that you don't have access to the pool.
The steps are only like two feet wide. So it was going to go from where the gate of the fence...
Commissioner Fisher, we basically said, why is there a fence outside of the, why is there a fence on that side of the yard? The fence is supposed to be around a pool. It's not supposed to be around the front of the house. And we said, why do you have a fence out in front of the house? And now we're looking at it, and you have a proposed gate. So that proposed gate there makes all of that fence not necessary, just a fence in the front yard.
What you could do is towards the, what, if it be the southern west end, why are we going so far down at the bottom where it says proposed gate? Why is that blue line? Why can't it be flush against the house? Give another picture. Thank you. No, that's not the one I want.
So I think, if I could offer a couple comments.
Well, I just want to see what, I want to see what Commissioner Selim was saying. Can you find photos so she can finish describing what she's talking about as her proposal?
Just a photo?
Yeah, we need a photo of...
Okay, oh, oh, you passed it. Okay, stop. See the bottom of the house right across it? Why can't that fence go straight across to the backyard fence? Why is there that? Yes.
Let's look for a second at what was originally approved. Let's just step back a second. So originally, there was, a portion of the fence was in what was the front yard. And we can see now, which is the illustration on the right, there's more of it in the front yard. So do we have an illustration that shows what's proposed? So we can see...
An illustration, like a rendering?
Yeah, no. There, okay. Nope, go back.
There.
Okay. So now we've got less of it, less fence in the front yard. There's still, this really doesn't show the front yard. Do you have that with the front yard?
I don't think so.
Will you go back and get one? I'm just trying.
But it would be here.
Okay, it would probably be right there. So there was comment, to Lauren's point, there was comment about the fence being angled. Actually, I think I made the comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But actually, Brad thought it was a good idea and said, well, that's not a bad idea. And I think he agreed with that. I think Will may have agreed with that too. So there was...
We all liked the idea.
What?
We all liked the idea.
We all liked the idea of putting an angled fence in. Okay. We don't have an angled fence right now. Now, let me offer this though, so that maybe we can get some kind of conclusion on this. So let's go back to what's being proposed, which is not an angled fence. But, and having driven by this house now several times, it doesn't look good. I mean, as you're driving down Linda Lane, no question, this does not look good. Can we go back to the current plan? Yeah. So the way they're proposing, and maybe the screening along the fence could change a little bit more. But I think what we discussed, Lauren, whether, and I'm not sure you were even on board.
I was not.
You were not on board.
I still was not.
So, you know, truth be told, you didn't even really buy into the angled fence, though you were moving in that direction.
No, I never, I never was comfortable with a fence completely in the front.
Actually, I think that's true.
But everyone else agreed to that, and I...
Okay. So there was a proposal, and I think what we were intending was that it would start... So at the top there, you've got one, two, three, four, you've got five of these arborvitae's, those five right there. So at the end of those, what we were going to do is draw the fence back on an angle, right back to that point. That's when they walked out of here, that was, I think, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the angle we were talking about. But Lauren, I mean, you were not, you had not bought into that. Okay.
Okay, I just thought it went all the way back.
No, no, actually, I think that was the intention, but someone can correct me if, that's my recollection. So what do we have now? Now, as we drive by there, you see lots of fence.
Can you send me a picture of what it looks like? Oh, just that picture. So where the stairs are. So we asked him a couple different, yes, we asked him a couple different times, why the fence around this, in the front of the yard? Why around there? And he said, we have to have it there, I have stairs, the stairs one is the next one.
So he does, so there are stairs there. So I guess...
One more. You can see the stairs.
So he's got...
There, okay.
So he's got the stairs there. So if we want to be a little accommodative, he does have the stairs there. If we drew the line back on an angle, he would actually, he's actually giving us more at this point than I think we discussed a little bit when we were discussing the angle. Now, granted, it's still not in a place where I think you like it, Lauren, and it's not... And I'm not sure if you're the only one, but you said you didn't appreciate that. So, but he's given us more than putting it on an angle, because if it was on an angle, all that grass would be inside the fence versus now it's outside the fence.
That's just one small portion. I'm pretty sure the mayor at the time had said, take the fence, put it along the line, and just go all the way along the pool. And now we're coming out with a proposed gate, we're coming out...
So, I mean, they had this original approval that showed where the fence was originally approved. And so it was already a little bit in the front yard. So it didn't run, Connie suggested, well, maybe you can run it along that line. We'd already given them a little bit of variance already. So now we've got this fence that's squared off. Once the arborvitae's are placed, no one's going to see the fence because it's all going to be, it's all going to be screened by arborvitae's. And I think...
But not really, right? It's that thing you talked about, about the gate. If the gate goes this way, you can't screen the gate. If the gate goes that way, then you can screen the whole fence. So the gate area is not...
And actually, that can be a point of discussion.
But you said everything was being screened.
Because Connie's made those points before, where the fence goes and whether or not you see the fence. So the question is, at this point, I guess if you go along the front of this home, you're going to still see the gate. You're going to still see the fence. Maybe that's a point of discussion. But right now, the way they have this vegetation placed, if you're driving along Linda Lane, maybe you'll see some, maybe you've got a, I guess if you wrap the whole thing with arborvitae's because there's that gap, but other than that, the fence is going to be completely screened. Does that make sense? I mean, the fence...
Are you comfortable that it would be?
Well, I think we can look to the city manager. So right now, we can see they're proposing to put how many of these things in? These arborvitae's?
Forty-three.
So they're going to put 43 in. And I guess the question is, does that protect the neighbor on the north side? I mean, it protects Linda Lane. So the question I would have is, yeah, you're telling me 43. The number that you place is really irrelevant. What's relevant is whether or not it screens it. Because I can go get 43 arborvitae's that aren't like really premium arborvitae's, and they're not going to screen the fence. So what we would ask is that you have absolute screening of the fence regardless of the number. Forty-three is, it sounds like a nice number, but it depends on what you place.
Well, the picture's in here, Chairman. The picture's in here, and it's a 48-inch fence, right?
It's four feet. But, and these are five feet tall.
So, no, right here, it's a four-foot example of 30 wide. These little things here, you say, are going to cover?
They're saying there's 43 of them, and that's going to screen the fence completely. Yes.
I just wanted to mention, I did meet, I looked at this plant before it came to the Planning Commission, and those arborvitae's are 30 inches apart planted.
Okay.
They're really tight.
All right. On center.
Yeah, 30 inches on center because I recall actually the chairman talking about immediate screening of the fence. Also, I'm sure there's going to be some discussion about external mix of plantings, but I want to make sure that there's immediate screening, and 30 inches is pretty tight.
Isn't there a picture somewhere in here of someone with that tape measure? Or was that another application?
It's on this one.
Okay. So I guess...
So what you're saying, what you're saying is, if we have them move the proposed gate, then that neighbor's not going to have that good screening of the fence on their side if we move that gate? You like how it looks for the neighbor on that side? And then that coming out there, you think, could that come out there a little bit farther? That hedge that just goes a little bit?
Yeah, it probably could.
Which doesn't seem to be reason, that stopping?
Probably could. But immediate screening for this project, I think they accomplished. The rest of it, I thought, I thought we would accomplish that and then the Planning Commission could discuss any supplemental mixture of plantings around it.
And we asked you, sir, we said, hey, can you give us some of that kind of, and you did that, right? That stuff over on that side?
You did ask.
So, okay. So let's get back to the front section, because we've got to agree on this or make a motion or... So right now, we did leave this discussion with an angled fence. So now we've got a squared off fence. But they're really giving, they're giving up some of what I think they may have left this meeting with because they've got it squared off.
But for the record, it's still parallel to Linda Lane, the road that most of the residents drive by. It's parallel, and visually, it runs along...
It does, but it did...
But if you're comfortable with it, Chairman, I'm fine with it.
Well, it's not a matter of me being comfortable. I mean, everyone's got to be comfortable, right? I'm just one guy. So I'm just offering some comment. So it was always, going back to the original application, can you do that for us? So it was always going to be seen from Linda Lane. So that's the one on the left-hand side. So we were always going to see that fence from Linda Lane. We're just seeing a bit more of it now. The important thing is, is it fully screened? And maybe if, as part of some motion, and we still need to listen to the applicant, we reach a point where we're proposing 43 arborvitae's, but the motion will say 43 plus whatever it takes to completely screen the fence.
But we're also, Bloomfield Hills, and to the manager's comment, maybe because this fence is so egregiously in the front yard and parallel to the road, they could make that, they could beautify that, not just put a row of arborvitae's, but beautify it and make it something that the residents enjoy looking at, and not just a row of arborvitae's, but to the manager's point, mix in hydrangeas or some, any... a row of arborvitae's, but to the manager's point, mix in hydrangeas, or some, any different textures, different sized bushes, different, so that instead of, oh, there's a fence with arborvitae's, it's, it's like Bloomfield Hills, and it's something that the resident, the neighbors don't mind, and it's more in keeping with our city, and beautifying the road, the visual from the road.
And to your point, can you go back to the landscape plan now? So they're going to, so they're going to have that row of arborvitae's up against, what is that, blue line, and then the red line, but then in front of that, they're going to, so what's installed right now are those, those spruces right there, and so those things, yeah, they look pretty weak, but behind those now, they're going to install the, the concolor firs, so they're going to install all those concolor firs, which, what you're going to see, Commissioner Fisher, is when you're driving down Linda Lane, you're going to see those spruces. Behind the spruces, you're going to see concolor firs, which look different than the spruces.
Yeah, it's a great.
And, and really, there's big gaps, those things are twelve feet on center, but you see right through all. And so behind those, they're going to put those concolor firs, and then behind those, you're going to have the arborvitae's. So you're going to have all that, all that added vegetation, so.
Three layers.
Yeah, you have three layers of vegetation.
Okay, so, you don't think it's appropriate to ask for.
I, I think frankly, outside of, as long as we don't, the only thing I guess is, when, when you're driving down, was that Linda Court, so right now, there's a gap there, so that when they're done with this, Commissioner Hendrickson, Dave, so that you don't see the fence, I mean, which is Connie's point, you know? Let's close it up so that you don't see it.
I can make sure of that.
Okay, but we still need to listen to the engineer and the applicant. Okay, is everyone done with, with Eric?
I'm here, but I don't have anything to add.
Okay, well, that's good, okay, cool. Is he applicant here?
Hello again, I'm Steven Bonamiya from Creative Brick, on behalf of owner. I just got a message, he had an emergency and won't be able to make it, he was planning on it, but.
Okay.
I guess I just got the, so, I'll just get right to the point here, so, based on my recollection of the last meeting, and my discussion with the planner and the city manager, the angle that was discussed at the last meeting was from this corner up to this corner. So instead of doing that angle cut, we decided to go for the ninety-degree angle, which then puts that fence plane here in line with the deck that's above it, and that's the hardscape there, and then this would allow them access to get the lawnmower into the backyard to cut this grass. If this was at an angle, it's going to make it more difficult, it's going to be a little bit awkward for this little triangle of lawn space here, so that's why it was a ninety-degree, which gives them more space here. This is a full dense hedge all the way across. I already added in the note, plant quantity may adjust based on the size, and then yada, yada, yada. It might, additional evergreens shall limit the view of the hedge and visibility into the rear yard, and I'll read it exactly word for it. Plant quantity may adjust based on the shape and size of proposed trees to ensure the fence is shielded from view at the time of install. Additional evergreens shall limit the view of the hedge and visibility into the rear yard. So the intent is, you're not going to see this fence at all, from any portion of the yard, and from the roadway or anything like that. This is open here, because you have to be able to get a lawnmower into the gate and into this area to cut the grass. So it goes like this, because you're going to bring the lawnmower up and around and down and into the yard. These are then your ten to twelve-foot evergreens, and you can see they're tightly planted here, so you're not going to be able to screen it. Believe me, I'm not going to plant these trees, so you can see in there, because I know I'm going to get the call. So you can see the angle here, from here, going at an, at an angle, they were strategically done, so then you cannot see into the fenced area here. I know it doesn't look good now, but we're waiting to do the planting until we have the approval and it's all done correctly. You have the additional screening here on this outside, and then we even added some on the exterior portion of that, more into the yard, to give it more of the natural look. Eventually, I think when this all grows in, you're, this is going to be a giant landscape bed, and the owner can add more additional plant to it then, but you're not going to, like initially, you'd have grass between these spaces, but once these trees continue to grow, it's going to become a, a massive landscape bed, natural area. I don't know if you have any other specific questions?
Thanks for explaining the curve there, to allow them more in there, that makes a lot more sense.
I still don't see why, I can't go right there. Why they have to have this extra property? If they put the fence right here, no fence here, it's hidden from behind the house, they can come through here and enter the yard at this point.
This is Linda Lane.
No.
Yeah.
Well.
There's only one neighbor here.
So they can move it.
But we didn't.
It's not as egregious, it's, it's kind of like when you first, this first view is probably.
People doing things the toughest.
I, I.
And even this, you know, this way had a lot of gaps, but this is, you know, this is where they drive in your.
We have, we have two different conversations going on.
So, anyone have any added questions for the applicant? For his representative here?
I think there's a question that's come up a couple of times about why can't you just run the fence from where it was before at an angle back? I think the answer to that is that it's got to terminate at the house, so that you actually create a blockage from entry.
What she was looking at, Brad, was actually at the back end.
And then there's stairs.
So she's looking at the back.
She's saying, why can't you, and I kind of agree, why can't the fence just be along the pool line, of the cement line?
You have to block access to the pool.
Right.
Guys, at this point, so, let's go back to the original plan, just so we can resolve this question, so.
Yeah, you're right, it's got to be right here.
What Connie is proposing would be that the fence go back, sort of along the, the great, the shadowed area that goes straight back to the backyard, but you can see originally, we approved, we approved the fence outside, it, it didn't run along it to begin with, so the original approval, we can't sort of like take back what we already gave them, so we, we.
I would.
So, so we gave them that with our original approval, and frankly, I'm just one guy, but I think this is going to be screened. I mean, they're putting in, and he's got conditions in there that says they're going to put in what they need to, to screen this. The one question I have is, on the, on the, what would be, I guess, the north side, sort of on an angle, that we're not going to be able to see that, he's got like two arborvitae's planted, or proposed on the current plan, do you know what I'm talking about?
About the sport court, or by?
No, so, so he's got two, he's got six of those, is that going to screen, no, no, on the backside? So Connie's question is back there, so is that going to screen that, Dave? On the backside? Eric?
Over here?
Yeah, so.
What was it, well?
So he's got two, two, and two.
I don't know.
I mean, because that's technically, that's the front yard too.
Right.
So I guess, you know, just to make sure.
Eric, can you go the yard definition?
Yeah.
So there's, yeah, it's a side yard.
Let me be here.
We can make sure that.
I mean, it's, it's a fence inside, yeah.
It's a fence inside, we can make sure that's screened too.
Yeah, at least far enough back, because the yard goes down in the back, but, so when people are coming along Linda Lane, they don't see it.
Well, probably on that plan, it's not screened enough.
So.
Most of the concern was on the other, was on.
It was, but, so, so now, so the question was, Brad, you said, well, there's two different conversations, so there was.
I just wanted to hear what was being said over there, and I couldn't, because there was.
Gotcha, okay.
I think if we go one at a time, it's helpful.
Okay, that's fine. So are you guys comfortable with what you see?
I am. I mean, my preference would have been just to go back to the original approved plan, that would have been a no-brainer, but.
But we could, because they put in stuff.
Well, I, I think the original plan fits with, with what's there, but yes, I mean, this is getting a lot closer to the original plan.
Yeah, because the as-builds are different than what we approved.
Right, I, I mean, they put in, they put in improvements that, that were larger, and so the improvements changed, especially on the other side of the house, so.
Can I ask why the fence had to continue in front of that other patio as well? I mean, it's not just the pool they're fencing, they're fencing in the whole front of the house.
I, because, his, his point is because of the steps in the patio, and.
We'll jog it back before the steps, like the original approval.
So, do, can you have anything to add to that? It seems to be that, that when the build was being fleshed out, it made more sense to step up in the backyard, so they put the steps right there. Your client was, said those steps were added, and that's now why the fence can't go, we don't have an option of putting, pulling the fence on the other side of that outside patio.
I think it's just because of that.
You had the, you, there's no way of safely closing off the pool.
They have a walkout elevation up here, and then, and then the deck was already installed, so they came down to that finished elevation of the deck, so that elevation was already finished, and this door, this basement level is actually a little bit lower than this section over here, so they always needed those steps, or they would have had to create more steps from the top up here, to get down to that other elevation. This lawn area was always, like, this was approved on the original plan.
From what we approved.
So that to be there, and then to come back. So technically, the original plan was to bring it right in at these steps, but this, like I said, I think, when you architecturally look at it, this is underneath the deck.
The steps up, so.
Structure.
Yeah.
So it's really in line with the plane of the, the side of the house.
This is the house?
The client knows there's nothing great about having a strip of grass right next to a pool, just to have it all blown onto the pool, as opposed to a fence, right? I mean, it's not.
So, so we've got this plan, and I guess I'm gonna, maybe you can sit down. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment on this? Okay, so, we've got a plan here, and we've got a couple options. When he left here, and there was not complete buy-in, I mean, this has ranged from go back to the original plan, to the fences here, there was some comment that this fence has already been moved once, has this fence been moved once already?
I asked, was, was that the line where the existing trees were?
Pardon me?
Was that the line where the existing trees are?
It was way far out.
Those, those trees that are planted were at the fence line.
Okay, so you've already moved this fence once already?
Correct.
Okay, and you moved the fence, why?
To bring compliance, because it wasn't.
Correct.
Okay, so, so you originally put the fence in another place, so you've already moved the fence once?
Correct.
Okay, and, and you, you did that because you thought that was going to bring you into compliance?
We met with Brian, and McCarrick was there, and the coenforcement, and I think even Bremington was there, and we walked the site, and looked at every component, and we said, "Move the fence to this line, because this is where it was approved to, and then we're going to take it from there, and then show the additional planting that we can do."
Okay.
And address it from that point.
Okay, so you've already moved the fence once, when you moved it, did you believe that you were compliant with the original plan? I'm trying to understand, because you're not compliant with the original plan.
He just said he, it was a, it was a consensus of all the people in the city doing their best with the, with the site.
Okay.
It was a, move the fence to this point.
Did what they said.
There's no way it's going to fly out here, move it up to this point to maintain your, their lawn space, and then obviously, it came around the edge, so we can put it on top of the steps.
Okay, so it'll just.
Now we're going to move just that edge.
So, so now, so, can you go back to that original illustration?
The original, or to the current?
Yeah, that's good, so, so they have moved, originally, the fence was down, I guess, I never saw it, this was before it came to us, in front, closer to those spruces, so they've already moved this fence back once. So, there's a question on the table, do they take it back to what the original approval was? If we look at, what's our, our intent? Our intent is, we don't want to see the fence. I mean, I think that's our ultimate goal, and so if they, if they push the fence back another five feet or so, maybe it's six feet or seven feet to get back to where it is, still going to have a fence in the side yard, or the front yard, it's still going to be there, and the key is, let's make sure that there's enough vegetation in front of it, that we can't see it, and so right now, I think the general conclusion is, after we plant all these arborvitae's in front of it.
And more.
And more, and the arborvitae's and that additional filler, we're not going to see it, and so what, whether it's where it is in this plan, or if it's five feet, or six feet, or seven feet back further towards the improvement, you're still not going to see, you're still not going to see it, you're going, it's sort of depth of field.
Right. Can I just ask one question?
You can.
To Dirk, is there a way to word our approval, so that we don't set a precedent for other residents to look at this and say, "Well, we can do this, as long as we just landscape it, put a fence."
Each case is on its own merits, and it's decided based on the facts of every, for each particular case, so whatever you do in one case, it doesn't settle legal precedent for another case.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so, so we've heard the applicant, there's no one in the audience that has comment here. What I think I've heard is, we, we want to see the, the landscape beefed up a little bit more on the, what is here, the right side, where the, where the, where the arborvitae's are just two in a row there, so we're going to beef that up a little bit, and the condition will be that this is fully screened, regardless of what the number is, that it's completely screened, so I guess, question becomes, is there someone that's comfortable making a motion?
Commissioner Fisher, can you try to make the motion to put that in there? I would like to have it on the record anyway.
I do not want to make the motion.
Okay. About this front, not being a front gate. Okay, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve of the, this modification of a, of a, of a layout that, that was not in compliance, and has gotten into more compliance, and I take the word of the city manager, that he is going to make sure that none of this is seen from the road, and, and so I am, I'm proposing that we accept this modification, and the promises of the landscaper and the city manager, and similarly, there are four individuals out there making, trying to make sure that this works for the rest of the neighborhood, that we approve of that today.
And this would also be granting the sports court, as well as the grading.
So, actually, to Dirk's point, there's also a grade, we focused only on this one part, there's also a grading variance, because they filled five feet of the site, you know, so to your original question, Brad, there's other improvements that went in here that were.
Yeah, I was only speaking to the, to the screen.
So, that's why they couldn't do it as originally planned, so.
Yeah, well, then my motion doesn't work, because we, it's, that other stuff we haven't even discussed, so I'd like to hear if we are approving of the rest of this thing before I, I withdraw my motion. So, um, I'd like to hear if we are approving of the rest of this, um, thing before I, I withdraw my motion.
Well...
What else is there?
Actually, we have looked at that two meetings ago. I mean, it's sort of gotten stale a little bit, because we focused only on this.
Oh, okay. So it's, uh, it's grading?
Do, do you have the original complete plan? Okay, so, just to look at this, so, what happened was, where it says rear yard up there, so, what they did was, they did more grading back there. They, um, uh, they filled the site rather than cut the site. And I'm doing that from memory, I think that's what I read. So, that's changed, but no one sees any of that. And, uh, I think, and that's down, it's down a ways too, the grade falls, so...
So was that, was that approved by, by, by the city and, by the engineers?
Yeah.
Was the grading already approved by the engineers, stale or not? Was that already approved? You had no...
There was an approved plan and then the as-built had a different plan. And we did talk about it a couple meetings ago, as the chair mentioned. So I wasn't here to re-present on that. And there were really no comments the last time we presented on it, so that's why I kinda went through it. But just to give you a quick overview, this is what was approved grading previously. Um, as the chair mentioned, were some cuts in areas. And then this is the as-built grading. So this is actually what was completed out there.
So they changed this thing quite a bit from what was originally planned. So to your question, Brad, all this changed. And in the end, they're filling rather than cutting. But we sort of looked at this and you can't see it. So what your motion would have to say is, we're, uh, we're recommending approval of the plan as presented, which amends the original plan from April 2022 for both the grading, uh, and the fence and the screening.
Question, um, question, can you go back to the other page? All of that fill, all of that, that fill was, was never approved of? All of that, all that three-foot and four-foot fill, bringing the pool up? We, we, we got a lot of pushback from, from the residents saying, hey, that's just the angle where the pool was and that we had to handle it that way. This wasn't, this wasn't seen ahead of time before they came in for approval? That's a lot of fill to put into a site.
I think the sports court, which is also part of the equation here, and the grading was discussed at the last meeting.
Well, it was discussed two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago, and I don't think that the board had any particular, the commission had any particular problem with it. That was my reply.
My question is, how did, how did that, how did, how did that happen? How, how, how would, how could that have happened if they came in and we, and everyone says, oh, their fence was approved where it was, everything was approved where it was, and there was this much change to, that's, that's four-foot, five-foot fill? I saw what the original thing under the sport court was. That's a lot of fill that they put in there without actual approval from the city.
So, just so we're on the, on the same page, what they did was, um, they had a plan in April of 2022 to build the improvements, um, of a sports court, a pavilion, pool house, and a, and a pool. So, they didn't build what was approved. They significantly changed the plan without telling any, or I don't think they told anyone.
Not getting approval.
So they significantly changed the plan, okay? So, today, we have something, you can see what they, what they built. It's not even close to what was originally approved. And so when we looked at this now, the first time was in July of this year, when the city brought it back to us and said, they changed the plan. Planning Commission has to approve the plan now, because they changed their plan. This is what we saw. And HRC, I don't know if it was you, Lee or Jamie? Said, okay, they did change this dramatically. The original plan actually called for five-foot cuts. This is a five-foot fill. So they significantly changed it. And what we did was, we looked at it and we said, you know, they changed this. What harm is done? For lack of a better word, I mean, are we, are we really upset by it? We're upset that you changed your plan, but how does it impact the neighbors? And we concluded, really based on what Jamie told us, that this doesn't affect the drainage. And that would be my, our pride, that'd be a big concern. I mean, we're not happy that they did what they did, but we want to make sure there's no water problems.
So was the fence moved because of all the new cuts and fill, the cut, fills? The fills over by the pool?
Lauren.
I mean, if you do this, you do that and it's all...
Yeah, basically, Lauren, they did, they did, they were, they weren't even close. I mean, really, I mean, this is like, let me do it and ask for forgiveness later. I mean, they're, this plan isn't like, well, we moved this two or three feet, or we moved it ten, or we moved it ten feet. They completely changed it. So, what we have is, we're not gonna ask them to remove the, the improvements. We just gotta get through the fence issue here. And make sure that this, that the neighborhood is protected so that the neighbors don't need to look at the fence and the improvements. And I think...
And, and a whole fire pit that was never originally in, in there and is raised up four or five feet.
But...
So, and then when we look at the, the landscaping plan, they're like, oh, two, couple, no offense to you, but, because we didn't bring this up. But we're looking at that saying, two, two little, two little shrubs here, two little shrubs there, as opposed to the whole thing that we asked you to do. We just haven't asked that, that particular neighbor to the left, hey, did you know that they're raising, that they're putting in four-foot fills and putting in a whole fire pit area? And the city never, wouldn't they have been under the impression that the city approved of that?
Well, so I think a couple of things probably happened. This went out, this got public notice, didn't it?
For every time it's on the...
Okay, so, the neighbor's been notified. And one thing to consider, this site originally in that back corner, I remember looking at this thing way back when, it was really low back there to begin with. It was actually sort of swampy back there. So, by increasing the height by five feet, wouldn't have mattered a whole lot, because you can see how the grades change. So, I guess the bottom line is, um, when we looked at this in June or July, we concluded that this part of the improvement, while it didn't conform with the original plan, was something we generally accepted.
Mr. City Attorney, what is the, what, how would I put the motion? How would I say the motion?
Oh, you, what you said is fine.
Okay.
But then also say, and also approve the grading appeal and the sports court.
Um, I move that we, uh, that we approve of the modification of the fence by the applicant and of, and the screening design and the promises that, that this, that this fence will not be seen or the gate will not be seen from the road. And approve of the, uh, change in the grading and the sport court.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm gonna oppose too.
Okay. So, Connie and Lauren. All right. Well... I, I, I would suggest that when you make, when the, when you go back and do this, that you work closely with the city manager and make sure that no one has to see the fence. Hey, great.
And thank you for adding, mixing in, you know, hydrangea or something, so that it's beautiful from the street. Thank you.
The next item, the planning commission will consider the request of the property owner at 372 Barden Road for approval to install a pool and a fence in the side yard.
Okay, Eric. Our next item for consideration is 372 Barden Road. This property is located on the east side of Barden, near Vaughn Road, and is within the A3 zoning district. So the zoning district, standards of the A3 district are applied. The yard determination graphic, because it's a sweeping, uh, street frontage of Barden Road, the front yard is along that right-of-way. And then, um, applying the rest of the yards, the side yard is on the southeast and the north, northeast. And then you have a small rear yard in orange in the corner. So, uh, looking on the image to your right, the intention is to do backyard improvements behind the house in available space. So the applicant was able to achieve as much of that as possible. A lot of the proposed activity here in the orange rear yard. But as you can see, a lot of it also encroaches into the side yard. And it's the side yard fence and the side yard pool, which partially, uh, well, mostly encroaches into the side yard that requires planning commission approval. So this gives you a little bit better representation of what triggers the approval of the planning commission. So, the existing house shown here in white, the proposed pool and the pool cabana, pool house, uh, and the fence that, uh, encircles it. At this point here, uh, the proposed fence ties into an existing fence before, uh, an additional segment, uh, is proposed in the side yard. And there's a greater picture that we can see regarding that. We did meet with the applicant on this a few months ago to discuss, uh, what the expectations of a full review would be and what would go before the planning commission for consideration, with a lot of emphasis on landscape screening, um, and then the, the grade changes and the changes to the existing, um, the existing amenities that are, um, behind the house currently. So applying the ordinance standards, um, we found compliance of, um, of what they're proposing to do. And what's highlighted in purple, the pool and spa, the encroachment into the side yard requires planning commission approval. And then the pool fence, uh, four-foot aluminum in the side yard also requires planning commission approval. So, uh, we did go, uh, have a conversation with the applicant after our initial meeting, after a full review of the plans, um, to discuss alterations, changes, improvements, essentially tweaks to the overall landscape screening. The great benefit of this site is that, uh, if you visit the site, you can see that it's, essentially fully screened, or at least from the street, primarily fully screened with mature, existing, um, uh, evergreen trees. So, we're gonna focus a lot of our attention for, uh, intentional screening, um, towards the interior of the lot. So, what's being proposed, uh, again, the pink is the fence outline. And then here is where it meets an existing fence, um, and then, uh, an additional fence segment here. All of this is, um, screened by those existing perimeter trees. But here you can see that there's 36-inch burning bush, hydrangeas to emphasize within the fence. Hornbeam, there's one here and here, those are more of a columnar tall tree. And then additional shrubbery here with hydrangeas. And then boxwood, uh, screening this segment of the fence is six-foot emerald green arborvitae, as is, I believe, here, emerald green, emerald green arborvitae. So the main area of where you can see into the property is from the driveway along the street. There's a little bit of a visual perspective from, for this section as well. But we believe that with these enhancements, uh, and the enhancements here, that the attempt for adequate screening is, is acceptable. So if there's any questions about what types of species and plantings and spacings, I've included the plan schedule here that we can refer back to. And then I just want to walk you through some of the perspectives that the applicant was able to provide to just give you an idea of, um, the existing conditions and then what will be proposed. And then, of course, just looking at the direction of the arrow as it relates to the overall, um, site plan. So this would be looking from the north, northeast, at what's existing there. This is the area primarily where all of the improvements will be made. And then the intended screening, uh, surrounding that. And looking from the southeast, this is that one area where, um, just depends on where you're on Barden, that there's a little bit of a glimpse into the area where the improvements or that fence segment will be. But as you can see, again, the intended, uh, screening of that segment. And this gate is, like the previous project, intended for, uh, lawnmower access and lawn maintenance access. And then just some, uh...
Where's the gate on that? I saw, I saw the gate.
I'm sorry.
Now, the next, where is it? On the next page there? Right there, where's that gate?
Nope, that would be on the backside of the house, so it's behind here. Yeah. So this would be looking from the main driveway to the garage door bays. You know, there's a gate here, and so the applicant, uh, provided as much screening as, um, as they could fit in that location. Also required screening is the detached pool house cabana. It has screening, existing trees around the perimeter, and then enhancements, uh, in front as well. But again, the front views from Barden are obstructed by, uh, the large mature, mature trees that you'll see in just a moment. So this is just to give you kind of a lay of the land, an understanding of the layout. And again, we worked with the applicant to discuss dimensions, setbacks, um, cuts and fills, uh, changes to the grading. And after a few iterations, I believe this is the second iteration, we found that all of the standards were in compliance in terms of spatial, spatial dimensions. You can see here, there's some pool equipment tucked away where we like to see it. It's in the side yard, um, back here, um, which requires approval from the building official. But what he will be looking for is adequate screening. And then just, uh, to give you a perspective of the perimeter screening, so the lot is kind of a curved parcel. This is Barden here, uh, with the existing tree coverage. We'll walk through a few more aerials. So this is where that fence is, where the gate is, that would allow for, um, lawn maintenance through that gate. And then primarily the, uh, improvements back here behind the house. And then just another perspective showing what's existing back there. And then this is where those improvements will be made with the pool and the pool house. And this is the garage doors and where there's a peak, uh, from the street that you can see in. But there'll be added screening to help, uh, shield views. Uh, this is some photos standing on Barden Road. Sorry, this isn't the right photo, but it was intended to ta- take a look down the, down the edge of the street. This is looking in, um, towards this driveway entrance. So you can see a little bit of the house, but all of the improvements are back here. So it just goes to show that most angles along Barden Road have this type of visual perspective. And as I mentioned, there's a little bit of a peek into the edge where you would be able to see the direction at least of where that gate would be. But again, it's gonna have some enhancements with landscape screening from that point. Uh, and looking from the main entrance to the driveway towards the garage doors, the garage doors are here. And again, this is where that area of the improvements will be made. Mostly obstructed by all of those mature, big, beautiful evergreen trees. So, that's my presentation. If there's any questions, the city engineer's here to provide additional information.
Thank you, Eric.
Any questions for Eric? I do.
Yep.
So, those trees that are in the back.
In the back, is that what you said?
That, right there, so if you're looking straight back, so that pool house is back there. So, um, but go back to the original picture.
Of the...
From where we were looking from the driveway?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so right there, so, when I was in the driveway and I look back, I can see the, there's a house back there. You can see the house when you're in the driveway. So, um, whose trees are those?
The ones in front or...
The back.
I mean, in the front or the back, like right there?
So the rule is, um, we have a pool house, um, it's gotta be fully screened. So, right now, um, you know, it, we're putting in those burning bush, but that doesn't screen a pool house that's 14 feet tall, okay? So what does screen it generally, not completely, but generally, is those trees that we see from, go back to that picture. Yeah, so there's, there's evergreen trees, as you look straight back, uh, there's evergreen trees back there.
I think you can see it on that side. There's something.
Yeah, so, and, and when you look, um, you can actually, you can see the house back there. So... So, um, to meet approval, you need to fully screen the pool house. So right now, I wouldn't say it's fully screened, but it's sort of screened. But, um, going forward, there'd have to be a condition that those trees remain a screening vehicle to this pool house. So my first question is, whose trees are they? Um, and if they aren't the homeowner's trees, this lot owner's trees, um, and so they die, the, the homeowner that owns the trees shouldn't be responsible for screening the pool house. So, I just throw that on the table, because the condition of approving a pool house is that it be fully screened. And right now, I can argue really that it's not even fully screened, but the screening that's there is important to keep in place. And if they don't own the screening, then we've gotta make sure that with this approval, that the pool house always be fully screened. Does that make sense?
Yep, so-
Oh, I, I wanted to ask you, how tall is this pool house? Looks very-
It's, it's the maximum, I believe, so fourteen feet.
I don't need to split hairs, but it does say properly screened.
Well, proper, okay, yeah, well, and, and you're, and you're right. And as you look at this, I, I don't even know what that means. But, but I don't even wanna get, I don't wanna get into-
It's okay, it'd be really simple. Um, if, if, if properly screened, if it's not properly screened, we're just gonna turn it down. It's really, that's irrelevant.
But anyways, I guess I, I don't wanna start splitting hairs. I guess what, my point is, whose trees are those trees? Because if those trees die, if those trees die, then there's no screening for the pool house. So we're not really sure, 'cause I didn't see them on the plane.
There's no screening for the pool house in the whole back there as you're looking at the other house right now.
Well, no, there are, there, you know, there are.
That's, that's not.
Well, okay, so, so there are, there are, there are trees back there. They're, they're sort of sparse, they're not complete. My point is, there's screening back there. Is it adequate? Is it properly screened? I guess, that's, that's a pretty ambiguous term, and I'm not gonna even go there with screening. Um, so I'm not gonna split hairs, but what I will say is, if those trees die, there will be no screening. So I wouldn't want to approve something that's conditioned on the existence of those trees back there. And I've got pictures of it. Um, I can tell you what those trees look like, 'cause I took a picture of it. So, I wouldn't want to approve something that's conditioned on trees that exist today that are owned by the neighbor and not these people, and the trees die? So maybe we've gotta put that condition in this approval?
It doesn't matter, couldn't you just put the condition of a pool that has to be screened? No matter whose trees they are, because the trees could die if it's the neighbor's trees, or they decide to cut some down. That would require this applicant to install some trees.
Well, I, I don't see, I don't really see a question. There's the lot line, there's a row of trees that are on this side, there's a nice row of trees that are on the, on the neighbor's side, um, and then there's a big hole at that whole, uh, corner there that's not screened, that is gonna have the neighbor who I'm pretty sure pays a heck of a lot in taxes looking at this fourteen-foot pool house.
So, so I'm going to accept the fact right now, but, but I'm just one guy.
It's pretty obvious it's not.
Okay, I, so, I, I'm accepting that there is screening, and so someone else may argue that there isn't screening. Um, and we, my only condition, my point is, these trees exist. I started by asking, who owns the trees?
I own the trees. Are you talking about the trees along the, by the way, I'm the owner of three seventy Barden?
Okay.
So are we talking about the trees?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I stand up?
Absolutely.
So this is my neighbor, obviously you can see the neighbor's house, correct?
Right.
And there's a fence there. The trees, there's trees on her side and my side.
The tall, who owns the tall tree?
You can look at that one, you can show us the trees on this other area.
Like if you see these, there's trees along my, my property line, and you, because she has a pool as well, so she has trees on her property line as well.
It's right there, you're looking at.
This one, right here?
No, next door, the picture next door.
This one.
The one to your, um, the picture to, to-
Photograph on your-
A little farther? You can demonstrate really well what you're saying to us. Go ahead.
Yeah, so if you, so hypothetically speaking, this is a fence, correct?
Yes.
There's trees on my side and there's trees on her side, guys. So they protect, obviously, because it's important. I like trees myself, so whatever you guys want, they'll put as many trees as you want. Nature's peace, okay? For me, at least. So she, Gail's got trees here, and I've got trees here, and her and I get along very well. We like trees.
So, so you're right there?
Yes.
And you like trees and you like, okay. Um, that corner right there, where you can see your, 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 that, yeah, that full corner there, would you be open to putting trees there? You're obviously are a tree pur- I mean, you're obviously have beautiful pines.
Absolutely.
And that's all, I would love to see you be able to build that, I would just love to see.
I, I, look, I bought the property in two thousand twenty really quick, guys, okay?
Yeah.
And I'm ready to, um, when I bought the property, it needs a little bit of sprucing up. I'm gonna tell you all, just because of the property, the, you live in Bluefield, so let's be, let's, let's, let's be, we all know why you live in Bluefield, right? I love, I love where I live. So I would love the opportunity to really spruce it up a bit. I feel like it needed a bit sprucing, it does need a little bit of trees, it does need the flowers. And I wanna, look, I work seven days a week to afford what I've worked for, so I wanna be able to drive into my property and look at beautiful trees as well.
Okay, so, so, um, so, you're, uh, twenty twenty coming in, you totally get, okay, so, so. Um, it's a gorgeous design of the pool house, and it is, other people who've been living on this street, excuse me, chairman, whoever's ever living on this street, um, all they would like to not see is your fourteen-foot pool house as they're going down the thing. Is there landscaping that you would be open to, to doing where, that you wouldn't, when you're driving by the house, you don't see your, your, you don't see the pool house? I understand you have a very interesting lot. I really like how you're building it out.
Can I, can I offer this, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, 'cause she's sort-
I would like to approve of it, but-
Well, but, but we've still gotta get through a couple of things, and I see where you're headed. Um, and I think it was important that we understand those trees.
Yes.
So, just so we're on the same page, since you're standing there. So it's these trees.
Can I, can I, am I allowed to come over there?
Sure. So, so this is, this, these, all these trees here?
Yeah, so there's the fence. So you can see there's a fence, so there's trees on my side and Gail's side.
So these tall trees?
Those tall, there's a tall tree, that's mine. That one is Gail's on that side.
Okay.
But you can't really, so that tree-
Okay, you answered my question. You answered my question.
That tree's way out, though.
So I understand.
It's on her property.
Right, okay. So you answered my question.
Awesome.
That's what, that's what I was after. Okay, so at the end of the day, and, and we're gonna sort of move this forward, so the tree then that's protecting the screening of that pool house is owned by the neighbor.
Yeah.
Okay?
All the way out.
So, in other words, so the screening that's required, and we can define, we can argue about what properly screened is.
Chairman, you keep saying that the screening that's required, we're just asking about from the road, you keep saying.
Right, but it's gotta be screened to the neighbor, too.
But it-
So, so the screening, uh, is owned by the neighbor, so as a condition, we've got, if, if that tree dies, um, then you're gonna see the pool house, right? Which, we all understand, it's not gonna be, assuming properly means screened, it's not gonna be properly screened. So, so we've gotta reach a point where they're responsible, someone's responsible for screening this going forward, 'cause we're relying on the neighbor's screening. And the applicant's now said she's going to provide yet more screening if we ask her to. Okay, that's what I wanted to get to. Okay, second thing, um, so now we've got that done. And, and I'm gonna just make a comment, but it doesn't affect this application. Go back to the original plan.
Like, uh-
No, the, the, the overall plan. So, really what you have here, and we've run into this condition before, where, where it says side yard, that's really, because of the angle of this road, so we've got a rule that says if the radius is less than a hundred and thirty-five degrees, when you draw two lines off the road, you've got a corner. So, really, this lot is, that's a front yard, where it says side yard. If you were, and, and I drew it in really, sort of, just, I just, I don't have the whole plan, so I can't really figure this out, but if you draw these lines out, this is really a corner lot. Now, it's not an issue, but I think just so the commission understands, where you have, we have a road that turns like this, that this is really under our ordinance, this is a corner lot. Um, because if you draw the line straight, uh, as you're coming down Barden on the north side, and draw that line straight, and then draw it, uh, as it's coming, uh, up from the other side, you end up with something that looks like a corner. And so if this, if that angle is less than a hundred and thirty-five degrees, this becomes a corner lot. Remember we ran into this with Country Club? It was on Country Club, we had that, that house way back when, about three years ago, uh, and we went through that. So this is really a corner lot. As I look at it, though, just for the record, whether this is a front yard or a side yard, because of the location of these improvements, nothing's affected, because everything's tucked in the back, um, and we're approving everything anyway. So I mean, there's really not much of a rear yard, so we're approving everything. So, just going forward, um, uh, that's how you figure, uh, a front yard where you got a big curve in the road. Okay, Leah?
Yep. So we don't have any engineering items to approve today. Uh, grading is all within the ordinance, as are, um, all the retaining walls and everything, uh, but I do just want to point to some of the stormwater improvements that they are making, since they are adding a lot into the rear yard. Um, so we've already talked about where the lot is, uh, but we just have an image that shows, um, how drainage is currently flowing, um, and something we worked closely with them on is just making sure they, they're doing some stormwater improvements, um, because of the additional, um, area that they're adding to the rear yard. So, um, they are proposing, uh, a good-sized drywall, um, in this vicinity, uh, with some trench drain under the ground, um, and some other pipes to really maintain the stormwater on their own site, uh, before it flows out to other properties. So as you guys are aware, that's something we're really pushing, is when people are adding additional impervious area, that they're really accommodating any of that additional stormwater. So, um, we do feel what they're proposing is adequate, uh, for what they're doing here. So just wanted to point that out.
Any questions for Leah? Thank you, Leah. Is the applicant here? Well, I know you are. So, do you have, uh, uh, thanks for your comment. Do we have anything else that you'd like to add?
I, look, I love my property, I, I, I just wanna improve it again, I love where I live. I, I'm a typical American dream, so it's like, this is, this is my dream house, I'm not planning on going anywhere, but I really do want the opportunity to bring the house up to where it needs to be, especially when you think about it, we're across from Quin Rock. Um, I, again, I bought the house in two thousand twenty, I absolutely love the property, it deserves to be beautified, and, uh, that's really, that's the reason here, so I'm gonna thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I did walk around the property and it did, it was completely, seemed completely screened, so, in the back, so.
I love trees, I'm gonna tell you guys again, I mean, I'm not one of these neighbors that, um, well, I really do, I think it's important, privacy's important, but it's also understanding, um, making sure that you are just correct, and he's in, and you're one of your neighbors, obviously, to look in, and thus far, so, but I really do get along with my neighbors, they're good people. They call me up and put these on my backyard, and they call me up. I, um, it's fine, I work seven days a week and they watch my property, so I love it.
That's pretty sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
OJ, did you, so, I didn't wanna interrupt you before, but you were commenting about the screening in the back. Are you happy or do you-
No, as, as the landscape plan is, is written right now, I'm not a guest. I'm just, I'm not a guest. It's an amazing property, it's an amazing, uh, uh, screening, natural screening that she has, uh, from the, uh, boys' school, beautiful, the boys' school. So she has, she has that kind of, uh, to her house, so she knows what the, she knows what screening is. So I don't have any more questions of the applicant, I guess I would speak more to the landscaping. I just don't, I just, everyone keeps saying this, we're done, oh, we have proper screening, oh, there are great trees in front, we can't see it. That'd be great if it were just, um, a side yard fence, because they look like they're really covering the fence around the pool with beautiful landscaping, front and back, everything's perfect there, which is putting in a fourteen-foot, um, uh, pool house. And, uh, and a brown fourteen-foot pool house. And, I'm not, I'm not satisfied with, uh, with the lack of, um, even, even green giants, boom, 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 in a kind of a way, so you can't see it as you're, as you're driving by the area. It's a beautiful area, you picked a beautiful street, and people are very much into their, uh, landscaping in that area, and you have some of the nicest roads in your whole, in your whole area, too. Uh, but it's a very, it's a well-trappled, um, and, uh, I, I'm just not satisfied with the way the landscape is.
So would you, so are you saying, on the backside then, you wanted, were those, do you wanted to see a few more trees in the back of the area where that hole was?
Yeah, I say that, but, um, but Eric was showing the, um, the, the view from the driveway, from the driveway, just as you're, as you're, as you're, as you're, as you're driving through, and that area of the lawn, this is a beautiful, again, a beautiful landscape plan, it would prove it in a heartbeat if it didn't have the pool house there. And I, I do not believe that's adequate, um, because of, it's just, uh, it's a silly way that the driveway is open up, that it's not that they, it, they just need to be able to, uh, have higher landscaping, um, so that you're not looking at the pool house. And Eric, it's that photo of like, just their, it's, it's, it's the silly area of their, they're doing the right thing, how they're building out their property, no problem with that. But it's when you're looking down the driveway photo, when you're looking down the driveway photo, um, there's a, that one, you're right, there's a, that area right there where you have the teeny little bush, if you look at the landscaping plan and driving by the house, but then you look at the landscaping plan, driving by the house, you'll see that that is not screened from the road of people seeing the, the fourteen-foot brown, uh, pool house.
So, um, so what are you sugge- what are you suggesting then? You want some added trees, uh, along?
Yeah, again, a beautiful landscaping plan if you didn't have the fourteen-foot thing there. This is all beautiful, this goes with the, that goes with the neighborhood, everyone's doing all the same thing. It's, it's that, the random green, it's the random green giants there where you never see it. It's, you, you don't see it, you don't see it, you kinda see it, of, of what the city manager said before. Um, you kinda, but you don't see it.
Can I offer this?
You don't see it on television.
Can I offer this then? So, just, so that little tree that you're talking about there on the right-hand side?
Yes.
So if, if they put in a couple of evergreens there, would that satisfy you?
Yeah, um, uh, the, the, the green giants with your beautiful landscaping plan around there, so you say, oh, is that, I don't-
'Cause you really don't, you gotta look, this is looking right down the driveway.
Their whole house is completely screened, they know what screening is, no one can actually see their house, they kinda see their house, they can't see their house.
I've missed it a few times.
It's very nice, right? Um, so you know what that is?
Yes.
And then you know that if I'm looking at your, your house, that house in the back, the, the white house in the back, they can also see to the, to the back of your thing. So, all, all, all I am making the argument is, as the landscaping plan stands, I like everything about it, but I, I wouldn't approve it today because, um, there's not screening from that neighbor on the, with the white house I'm looking at and, and from the road.
Can I propose, so that you can get, i- if, if she offers to put some added, uh, tall evergreens in the back, um, like here, and maybe one or two in the front, so- in the back, like here, and maybe one or two in the front, so that when you're looking down the driveway, does that get you to the point?
Oh, yeah, I would love to do that. I just don't know how you, how you approve of a landscaping plan that, that, that is not on paper.
Can I walk through that landscape side, just to make sure?
Yes, are you the landscaper?
Who are you?
Yes.
Great.
Could you let us know who you are?
Yes, I will.
It's the main button.
Thank you.
My name's Ellen Yerkes, hi. Honored to be in front of you guys with the work we've been putting into the plan, where um.
And what do you, what do you do?
I am the landscape designer for this project.
Oh, perfect.
We're with Antonelli Landscape.
Okay.
We have done several projects in Bloomfield. I'm a Loser High School graduate myself, so this is always fun to continue my work here in Bloomfield. So I did want to point out the side that you're addressing, and I, I know you and my client, Vezna, the homeowner, have a lot in common. You don't like fences. I had to screen it, not just from the outside, but the inside, she doesn't want to see it either. So, we're all in agreement on that, which is great. So we're, we're open to additional spruces or trees, as you see necessary. I just want to make sure we clarify where that is.
So, Eric, can you pull up the?
I want to go to this plan, if that's possible.
Because I think we can probably agree, if she's gonna tell us what she's gonna do. So, okay.
So, just to be clear, this is a, a four yard, we're looking where there is a hole in the back. This right now is burning bush. There could be a couple of spruces right there.
I think that'd be great, if you could do that.
And I will, and I'm sure it wasn't, sorry, yes, nothing. This row right here, this is arborvitae, and it goes like this. So it's screening the structure. That was the point of all of that.
This has screened a fourteen-foot, screening your fence really well, but not.
So you're supposed to, you're supposed to screen the entire structure, which is fourteen feet? That's why I was asking about those trees in the back.
Okay.
Because those screen the structure.
I could, I hope that we could come to an agreement with the screening for the gap here, and if.
That's what we need to do.
This is necessary, we'll have more here, but.
So what do you propose?
What, I mean, for me, I'd love to do, like, really, let's see. That driveway starts, like, the, the look is right here. So, I would add, right here, the, the large trees, and then move these hydrangeas kind of around in front of it.
So how many, how many large evergreen trees, and what type are you going to put in here? Number?
We can do, yeah.
Size and type.
I can say, right now, that this would require about six ten footers.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe only two back here, because I know that gap isn't very large.
A little ten footers, but the, the, the structure's a fourteen-foot structure.
Right.
And you don't, you don't, you don't really want to look at that place structure. You don't, you don't want to look at that.
Okay, no, no, wait a second, timeout, timeout. Okay. Pardon me. Okay. So, so there's, there's an application. So you've got one commissioner that's, that's suggesting, in order for her to approve this, that we add some vegetation that screens this from the driveway, which is from the road, and that we screen it from the back. And the goal, the goal is, you've got a fourteen-foot structure, and so we need to screen that. So, I think if you say, we can add in, you said six, if they're, if they're twelve footers, um.
The pool house is also located lower than the grade by the driveway.
Okay.
So, we're already hiding it by about.
Okay, and, and I get how grades work, you know.
Will you say what it, what that is? It's lower?
It's lower.
Okay. Two feet?
Two feet, lower than where we're planting.
So we can put, so you're offering to put in, like, four or so? I heard you say six, but I don't even know you need six.
I mean, it could be, it could be up to six, it could be anywhere between.
Okay. So, so, what kind, what kind of spruces are you gonna put in?
Oh, we can, I would think the best choice might be the conifer.
Okay. Those are great. They're perfect. But they're narrower, so.
Need six.
So you probably need, yeah, you probably need six. Okay, and along the back, you're gonna put in three or so back there?
About three, four.
Yeah, they will. I walked back there.
Oh.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So you're gonna add in three in the back, and?
Is that instead of the burning bush, because it's gonna be?
No, I'm probably gonna keep the burning bush. We'll just eliminate, like, say, the six where those need to go. Right, like, I can relocate, so we're still adding variety and color, because those obviously turn gorgeous red in the fall, so.
So, so basically, in that open space, right, that's between, between the burning bush and that hedge? Yeah, so you're gonna throw, like, three back there, and that's gonna screen that, so that when that neighbor's coming up their driveway, they're not gonna look at your pool house.
So, do you have six-foot or eight-foot arborvitae there, in front of that, of that fence, and then you have plages behind, doesn't like that? How would you even see the burning, the burning bush back there, if you, if that's your living area? Is that, do you feel like there's an ugly fence back there? Are you trying to hide?
The, the, yeah, the neighbor fence goes all the way across that side, we're connecting into it. So it creates an area where mowing won't really make sense, so you keep that as a landscape, so the burning bushes, or now with the concolor fur, bringing.
So, so then, to bring this to conclusion, you can put three of those concolor furs in the back? You'll figure out a place to, to do that?
You want to go there?
And you're gonna put how many, how many in the front?
What you do?
We can do six in the front.
Okay. Perfect.
And then, again, I'll move the hydrangea front.
Okay. And so we understand, everyone's on the same page where they're gonna put that? Okay. So, does that resolve your concern?
I think so. I think, I'd just like to know where you're putting the, the trees, you can, or not.
So, because we have the driveway coming this way.
Yeah.
The best location will be one, two, three, four, five, six, right here. Not moving the hydrangea in front of it.
And I, I totally agree with, with my fellow commissioners, that that group of trees right there is already, is already blocking that first angle. It's only right, it's only, it's only right here. It's only right in front. I, I'm saying it's a clump of, more of a clump of trees, giving you, that stuff on the left-hand side, those trees, really is blocking a great deal. It's, it's only in this, in this area.
This part here?
And then, yes. And then you're saying you'd put it also in the back, so you can't see that, so that white house isn't looking back at it?
Then these three will be right here.
What, what's wrong with in that corner there? Is that how, where you see the hole there?
These corner?
Yeah.
This, this has the, the trees now, so that gap is right here.
Okay, and that's where you see the white house?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So you can, so are you happy? Can you make a motion?
I don't think she's happy, because Vezna's getting more treats, so she's smiling. I'm gonna be happy with it, please.
Are you, are you happy?
Any other questions?
Does anyone else have any question?
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Are you comfortable? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of the property owner at 372 Barden Road, for approval to install a pool and a fence in the side yard, but with the addition of adding two to three spruce, spruces or concolor fur in, behind the cabana, to fill the gap, exposing the proposed cabana on the north side of the lot. Does that describe where you want, the ones at the top of the drawing?
You always do this so well.
I don't know, and screen the view of the cabana from the road, with strategically-placed additional six concolor fur, where the driveway is, I don't know how you know.
I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The screening in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the first part of it said, two to three spruces or six concolor fur to fill the gap, exposing the cabana on the north side of the lot.
Okay.
Is that?
So it was like, it was, actually, it was.
How do you describe that area at the?
That was three on, that's sort of the north.
Three in the back.
That's three in the back.
Three in the back and six in the front. It depends on the spree, the species, too, right? So you need six of the concolor fur, or two to three of the spruces.
Right. Okay. And we've got a second?
My second was at the proper height, or the height that covers the?
Oh.
Yeah.
Right.
And what do we, what do we say in terms of height?
Ten feet.
If it's lower, then it's.
He said ten feet.
Ten feet.
Okay.
Well, if it's lower by two feet, and it's a fourteen-foot, then I'm, I'm, I'm looking for one growth year cycle, whatever.
To fully screen the cabana from the driveway view of the road, from the road.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
I can't wait to see it.
I feel about, like, these here, and I'm not that, right?
Yeah, so, she has, she has the same trees I have outside of my house. I'm going my.
I would better invite.
Enjoy. I did notice from the road, you are, it is lower in the back.
I think these.
Thank you for that.
I didn't know if this.
Thank you so much, guys. It's gonna be so.
One, two, three.
Kind of stagger.
It's staggering, the green giant.
Thank you all.
Yeah, nice meeting. Lots of.
Thank you, that's cool.
All right. So, our next item is, the planning commission will consider the request of the property owner at 655 Vaughan Road, for approval to install a pool fence and sports court in the front and side yards, motor court piers, and a grading variance appeal.
Okay, our last item for presentation is 655 Vaughan Road. This is at the corner of Vaughan and Loser Road, on the city's west side. As you can see in this image, there is waterway here, so much of the yard adjacent to where the improvements are being made is wet, and so there is a twenty-five-foot natural feature setback, which this, these improvements are not in, in any concerning close proximity to that area. This is the A1 zoning district. Sorry, forgot to change the slide. The yard determination shows that this is a corner lot at Loser and Vaughan, both of which are front yards, so it's kind of unique in the sense that, when applying the rest of the yard lines, that the majority of the remaining of the property is side yard, shown in yellow, and then this little portion up against the waterway is a rear yard, kind of much disconnected from the rest of the house. So, any improvements behind the house would be within the, the side yard. And again, that's for side and front yard pool fence, front and side yard pool, and then the sport court in the side yard, as well as a sport court fence surrounding the, the actual court itself. So to zoom in a little bit more, just to give you some perspective, here's Vaughan Road, the front yard, the pool is intentionally behind the, this portion of the house, and so with the dimensions of that, you can see part of it's in the side yard, part of it's in the front yard. Because Vaughan Road is not the primary access, I'm sorry, the, the way in which the house faces is, is towards Loser, towards the west. So, this is the secondary front yard, which allows for improvements to be proposed there, with planning commission consideration and approval. Number two, again, is the side yard sport court and the fence that surrounds it, and then the motor court piers with the proposed new driveway access here. There's some piers that surround the, the motor court, which require planning commission approval as well. So this is the table of the ordinance standards that, that illustrate that. And then just to walk you through a few of the improvements, again, the pink is the pool fence, so as you can see, the intent is to not go through much of the yard, but to stay in close proximity, right up against the pool terrace, and connecting to the house. The house is existing, there were additional permits that were approved, so there, there's construction on the house currently, so this is the existing home. There was an addition on the Vaughan, or I'm sorry, the Loser roadside, as well as a garage addition over here, so that's all under construction currently. The sport court is in the side yard, and then there's some retaining wall here, due to the changing in the grade, but surrounding the sport court is a ball containment fence, which is limited to three feet, simply because it's an opaque fence, or it's not open, an open design, like a wrought iron or aluminum fence would be, which those are typically allowed to be four feet in height, the ordinance allows. So because you can't see through it, it's limited to three feet in height, and that's what surrounds the, the sport court. And then lastly, the, the piers, the driveway piers, there are two driveway piers, but those meet the ordinance, so those are an administrative review and approval, but it's these piers here that the ordinance requires approval from the planning commission, and those are three feet in height. I just want to mention that the ones that are in compliance, those are allowed to be up to five feet, but they match the three feet height of the ones that are around the, the motor court. So I apologize to the applicant, I did do color rendering, or color overlay, color coding of the landscape plan to help visualize and to explain to the commission where the proposed trees are, but the file got corrupt and I lost it. So, we can refer to this plan if there's any questions, and we can walk through it with the, the applicant. But they did provide a list of the proposed landscaping, with the sizes and the spacing, mostly with the intent to provide adequate screening, where we did have some concerns. So the next few images will show just an overlay of the site. This is Vaughan Road here, and then Loser here, the proposed new driveway entrance, so there'll be a connection to both rights of way, proposed improvements directly behind the house. There is a, um, cabana, excuse me, pool cabana, right off the side of the pool, so we explained to the applicant that that also requires full screening. So there's some images that help visualize the, the scale and placement of the proposed improvements. So this is looking west, towards the front of the house, and Loser Road, and the pool, and the screening along the fence on either side. I believe those are five-foot hedges, so they would rise one foot above the, the fence height. And then showing an aerial from Vaughan Road, looking towards the home. As you can see, there's a good amount of existing tree coverage to help screen views from outside looking in. There was one concern, so this is on foot, earlier, I think in September, where views from Vaughan, looking into the property, because of the understory here, it's unobstructed to a certain extent. And so, this had, row of hedge, while driving by on the road, may offer more screening, but walking, in the height of the average man, this is a picture from my height of five-ten, you can clearly see within the property. And so we talked to the applicant about providing enhanced screening in this area, and so this hedge behind it will be a hedge of, I think it's eight foot, and like I said, I lost some of my data, so, let's see, I thought I had written it in there. Anyway, this is where that location's going to be, and those are eight foot.
Trying?
Yes, cedar tree, thank you. So the intention is, the applicant, we went to the applicant, had that conversation, and so the revised plan is here. And I apologize, I would normally have that labeled and shown. So that, that concern regarding views from Vaughan Road have been satisfied, to the extent of promoting this to the agenda for the planning commission to take into consideration.
Thank you.
Any questions for Eric?
Eric, when you were showing us the posts?
Yes.
This overhead, so, even though they could go five feet, those ones, they're making three feet, and the other ones are actually asking us approval of, can you just show which ones are those on the overhead?
On the overhead.
Overhead, on the beautiful design?
Yep, so those would be here.
Those are the ones that need approval, are those four?
Uh, one, two, three, maybe four, five, six.
And those front ones could be five feet, but they're making those three feet, they're all, okay, thank you.
Yeah, according to the plan, they're all the same.
Okay.
It's just that those are allowed, those.
And even though the sport court on your, on one of the drawings said a mesh fence, you're not doing the mesh fence, you're doing a?
No, it's a transparent mesh, it's plus visible.
Black?
Like a chain link.
It's a black?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Real thin.
And so, so they're being held to, they're being held to three feet high, because it's a mesh fence?
Because it's closed, it's not open.
Because it's closed?
Like if you think of the wrought iron...
Isn't it meshed though?
Just to catch the ball somewhere.
It has opacity.
It's more transparent than a chain link. That's why we use it, because you don't see it.
From my interpretation, it has the opacity.
It's like a flat screen you look through.
So I said it's just because I'd heard that you can put six feet if it's whatever, but you are putting the netting, only on one side?
No, on the two ends.
On the two ends for the, it's a...
Pickle wall.
Does that screen from Lasser?
Heavily.
Heavily, just can't see it really, but everything else.
You can a little bit, I mean.
There's heavy brush on Lasser, and then we put a bunch of evergreen all around the court, so even if the leaves in the winter go away, you're not seeing it.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Leah?
So we do also have a grading appeal for this, so they do have locations where they're cutting up to three feet and filling up to five feet for the project. They've also provided some drainage improvements, which I will highlight. Their retaining walls are all within the permitted height. They do have some cuts and some fills that's in the flood plain, so they are also required to get an Eagle permit for that work. So we've seen where the site is located, but just to point out, you know, there's a stream that goes through the rear of the property, so we'll be highlighting that when we talk about drainage. So they are proposing some drainage improvements. They have some structures around where the new driveway is coming, and all of these pipes are being directed towards the rear of the home. So this is letting at daylight, so all of the water will be collected and then let out into the open, where it'll run down the embankment here into the stream that's in the rear of their yard. Similarly, behind the home, they have the same thing proposed, where they have some, a structure that will be collecting the water from the improvements on the rear of the home, and also directing that towards the back, that it can run down to the stream in the rear. There are some grading proposed that are over two feet, so cuts in the area off of Lasser Road in order to build the proposed driveway. And then there's a couple other small cut areas in the back, and this fill area around the pool. This is the area that I noted that is, is within the flood plain, so this will require that they get an Eagle permit for that work. Are there any questions?
City manager is driving crazy when it rains, and all those, all those rivers just like that all fill up, and it goes crazy. Is this one of the ones that does that too? I think about it, there's this, there's another piece of property where the river goes all the way through, and it just goes crazy. Does your river fill up when, when it rains like that?
There's a huge floodway down there, like you can see where all the greens go, pretty sharp, and then it goes pretty flat. The whole area is a floodway that is allowed to fill up, but I don't think it's ever...
It is not, okay, that's nice for you.
Yeah.
It's nice for you.
It's a pretty good distance from the home back there, and there's a lot of area, at least behind this specific home.
Thank you.
Any questions, other questions for Leah?
Yeah, I'll come on up and, Nina, did you want to say anything? I do. So I was raised in Bloomfield, went to Ann Arbor High School, worked in there for thirty-three years at J.P. Morgan Chase, and now I'm finally moving back home. I do have a little guy, he's thirty years old, went down center, which is why we're asking for the front drive. He was born with respiratory issues, so he's hurt, and recently has suffered seizures, just like he's living where I'm, a little month earlier in his game. But he did get moved to the fire department and sent to fire trucks, so that was really nice.
That's great.
So I add hydrangeas, and I use boxwoods, because I love her manicured air, and I want everything to be beautiful. Any suggestions you have, we are open to doing more than happy to make those. I didn't realize the pool was also apart, so maybe we can move a little bit closer to the house, and we are within ordinance.
We're within ordinance.
So whatever you need us to do, we'll step.
So actually, Matt, she probably said more than you should.
I know. She just changed the plan.
Trying to get you out of the Eagle permitting.
So rather than you going through...
I'm gonna go quick.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna take one at a time, just very quickly. So the front driveway entry, pretty self-explanatory reasoning, she wants to be able to see the bus come up.
Shows a different photo than the grading?
Yeah, so then, well, that's fine. The biggest thing on that is the grading. There's a manmade berm by the road, so we gotta come through that and then slowly, gently come down to the drive. So again, spirit of the ordinance, which is nice gradual natural hills rather than any kind of forced looking thing. So that's the front drive. Piers are pretty self-explanatory. What this doesn't show is the landscaping that's in front of them, so even though they're tasteful, you're not gonna see them from the road. Sport court, like all these projects, we work, I think this one was three months working through that with these guys and everything, to do what some people I've seen here don't do, which is to try to minimize the heck out of our requests. So we put the sport court behind the house at first, it was gonna add seven or eight foot cuts, or fills, I'm sorry. So we ended up moving it to get it to a point where we don't even have an excess cut and fill for the sport court. We moved the cabana around again, so we had a very, very minimal cut and fill in that area. And then the pool patio, it's actually an existing space, so that area, you know, we naturally have a little bit of fill, but I should say that that hill, that where the fill is, was manmade. So anything we're doing is kind of correcting it to make it look more natural. Addressing screening real quick. So listening to these guys, listening to, like we always do, you know, I think Dave or somebody was kind enough to actually go drive and look at all the angles, came back to us and said, hey, guys, can you maybe think about putting some screening around the sport court, even though there's deciduous? We put, as you'll see from the plan, a number of evergreen trees that are mixed evergreen, so that it's year-round from anybody that might happen to stop on Lasser and look in. We also lined a nice layered hedge along Vaughan, which Eric showed you guys. So you have the pear trees, the boxwood, and then a nice eight-foot hedge. The one thing that I want to talk about with that real quick is that sometimes I think we think about seeing into the property from different areas. Remember that we're on Vaughan, so that the hedge is literally probably ten to twelve feet from you, so you would have to be in an oversized huge semi truck to possibly see over it. So even though that hedge is proposed at eight feet, you'll never be able to get back far enough to see over it. As we get toward the wetland, we did add some larger spruces to that corner, so that any angle that you see up that way will cut that off. And we actually added some decorative elements in the landscape plan left and right of that driveway. So again, cutting off any angles we can to see the cabana. The other thing that we try to do is, you know, not just throw arborvitae's around the fence, we try to make beautiful layers. We're doing the house actually right behind, I think some of you have probably seen, we did nice green giants and mix right down to that stream bed on this side, so it's very natural and beautiful, and not just trying to appease it by throwing hedges against stuff. So everything we do has intention, it has layering, and we're proud to be able to work here and, you know, hopefully make everybody else proud. So anyway, I'll answer any questions you have, but hopefully I gave you a quick, easy overview.
Any questions?
No, go ahead. The fence around the, or the, there's no fence around the pool, correct? It's the matching stone to the house.
So there's a retaining wall that's existing, Lauren, and basically the fence has to go above that, but there's a boxwood hedge that's five feet tall that blocks the whole thing.
So you're gonna have the stones?
Can we go to those renderings here?
Love it.
We'll show you the rendering here. So right here, Lauren, you can see the hydrangea, and then you have the boxwood hedge, and behind that boxwood hedge is the fence. So it's completely...
So there is somewhat of a fence on top of the stone?
Yeah, right, right, because we have to block it from the outside, not the pool side.
Right, correct.
But you won't see it, because our plant material's higher than the fence itself.
Great, thank you.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Will you look at this picture?
Yeah.
So I only have sort of one issue, and I think you're addressing it. So this is from Vaughan Road.
Correct.
Okay, so you see everything. Now, I heard you say you're gonna put, and I don't see them in the plan.
Yeah, they are.
So what you did on the north side, where you put all those spruces in there, that looks really good. You can't see through those, but here, you see, actually, you see everything, right?
Right, so we added, and I'll pull the rendering up, we added a eight-foot hedge behind that hedge wall, so basically you have the pear trees, boxwood, and then another hedge.
So how close, so those are cedars?
Yeah, so it's a really nice layer, so it's an eight-foot cedar.
So, and how close are they, are they basically gonna create...
Literally touching.
Okay, so you're, so those are gonna be about this tall, and so when you're on Vaughan Road, you're not, so you're not gonna, you're not gonna see into this backyard?
You're not gonna see into that.
That's all I need?
Yeah.
Okay. But are they on, are they on the plan?
Yeah, can we go to the plan?
I guess I didn't see them on the plan.
Yeah, I'll show you real quick, Walt. There, it's just hard to see, there, the existing trees are right in front, right there, and the hedge is right there, it's that small line, and then we added three spruce here to cut that corner view off right there.
There's a lot more spruce, though, on the other side of the drain.
Where are you showing them, I'm sorry. Well, we got around the sport court here.
No, I'm talking about along Vaughan Road?
Yeah, there's a, well, we planted a bunch for this person all the way up to here.
That looks awesome.
Yeah.
So it's once you get beyond, sort of between that spot?
Yeah, so you have, so you have the pear trees that are here, that you're seeing in your picture, you have the boxwood hedge behind them, and then this darker line is the new eight-foot hedge, and these are three new spruce here. So the trees that we just planted for the other client come all the way up to here, and so it's gonna be like a nice continuous, again, really nice layers.
Okay, that's what I need.
Yeah.
I just have one more thing.
Sure.
Today I found it kind of tricky leaving the existing driveway, only because it was a blind.
It sucks. We're pulling all that back, that's new landscape.
Oh, super. I can kind of see it from the drawing, but just for your safety, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
So we want as much privacy as we want, and I think we have all of course right now, but there is no privacy.
Okay.
I have a question. So driving down, neighbors across the way don't have to do all that kind of stuff, they're putting these taller kind of, are those green giants across, across the street, across the street on Vaughan, behind their fence?
On Va, well...
It's kind of a theme thing going on, what kind of...
What we're doing 695, which is directly behind...
Is that heading towards the school, Montmore?
Heading toward the school.
Heading towards the school. The different neighbors have very tall, what would those...
Well, the neighbors on the south side have like a wintergreen cedar, which is like a cedar hedge, which is nice.
Is that what you're proposing, something like that?
Which is, which is, which is very close to what we're proposing behind those pear trees I'm talking about.
Okay.
And then the neighbor that we're doing on the other side of the street, we've made it more of a, you know, a mix of trees, so it's more natural.
Okay, that's what we're looking at. So that's not, that's their property, and then we're just gonna continue it into...
Right, and with the pear trees that are there, and then the boxwood hedge, it's appropriate to have another layer, right? It looks appropriate.
Okay.
Any other questions? Eric?
I was gonna say, may I make a motion?
Well, let me just see if there's someone in the audience.
Oh, sorry.
I have one more comment, sorry. I think I neglected to mention that the pool, because it's within the front yard, the front yard's not three times the setback, I just wanted to make clear, because it was mentioned that there was a certain code noncompliance, that the front yard portion of the pool is, is allowed for planning commission to consider for approval, except it doesn't meet that depth standard. And so that's what will require ZBA approval if the planning commission does approve these plans.
If it was the side yard, would it be appropriate?
If it was in the side yard, it would not require approval from the ZBA. It would just, it would fall under the standards for accessory structures within the side yard that would require planning commission approval, dimensional approval for the side yard. But it's because it's within the portion of the front yard...
It's not forty-five to the back?
In the green.
Right.
It's not three times the setback, the depth of the front yard, so that triggers a zoning board of appeal. But that whole area is existing.
Oh, I have this beautiful design. Do you have a gate on there? Do you put a gate on the, on the, so gate now on Lasser Road?
So there's a...
Are you gonna put a gate on the back, on the back one?
Lasser Road, I don't know where we put the gate?
We haven't applied for any kind of gate, you know, you mean like a vehicular gate? Not as of now, I mean, maybe...
He knows riding the bus to school, so that's the reason I'm asking. But then he wants his independence, so he can walk out the front door and keep my eyes on him. He won't be able to walk out the front door all day to go and catch the bus.
Okay.
Because of his respiratory and the weather.
Okay.
So this is my way of giving him his independence. So I don't think we need a gate on there.
I mean, you'll live there, and if you feel like you do.
Okay.
Well, the problem is if you add a gate, then you're gonna need to add a turnaround.
There's no plan for it.
But, but, but that's what you're, that's why you have that driveway on there.
Yeah, because we'd have to have the turnaround, we'd have to go into that big berm, it would, yeah.
Although, Dave, could the fire trucks use the Vaughan entrance if they had to, so there wouldn't have to be a turnaround on Lasser, if they added a gate?
Maybe.
Do you need ZBA approval?
Or would it still trigger the need for that?
I think it would still trigger, because it's not just the public safety, it's deliveries and anybody that's trying to get in.
Right.
Lasser.
So if you turn in, you gotta be able to get out.
Yeah, I guess it's more to have a way out.
So is there anyone in, in the audience that has a comment on this? Okay. Larry?
No. So before I make the motion, do we need to make it subject to ZBA?
Yes.
Thanks.
And Eagle.
And Eagle. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the property owner at 655 Vaughan Road for installation of a pool, fence, and sports court in the front and side yards, motor court piers, and a grading variance appeal subject to ZBA and Eagle approval.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Good luck with your project.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, opposed.
All right. So that concludes our, our agenda.
Before we adjourn, can I, can I revisit, and this is housekeeping, but I caught, I think, some corrections on the prior minutes. Was I absent? Because you've got me absent, but not in, I think it was just Craig, Arnold, but I'm noted as absent throughout, so just take a look at that. That's it?
No, actually, I know he was here.
Sometimes I'm not sure.
Yes, no other comments?
I have a comment, I believe it's Commissioner Larry Neal's last case, I just wanted to...
Yes.
Let's size him.
Yes.
Everybody appreciate you, so, sorry you can't stay out, but we certainly appreciate all your talk.
Larry, you're gonna be in a different, a different committee meeting, or a different...
He actually was asked to be on the board for Kirkland Hills, which...
Oh, very good.
So I'll start on that, and I have a diabetic dog, and when our meetings get very long, three hours, it really throws her off, and I'm a single, single dad now at this point, so anyway, it's been a pleasure. It's so nice to meet more residents, and it's a joy, and I love the city just like all of you do, so I'll be around.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't say Brad is going to be, this is your last meeting with us.
Yes, that's, that's true.
But, so in another four years or so, you'll be back with us, or three years. So...
Soon as he will be.
He's on the commission, right?
I'm on the commission, but I'm just off the planning commission.
Lauren DeSantis?
Congratulations also on the mayorship.
Thank you.
Accolades being thrown around today.
Well deserved.
And great holidays to everyone.
Thank you, thank you.